Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Wanarua people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sessnock local government area. For tonight's council prayer, we have Reverend Nicole Baldwin from the Anglican parish of Sessnock, so please come forward Reverend Nicole. Councillors, if we could please stand for the council prayer.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we pray for the council of the city of Sessnock, its members and officers. Direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us. Guide their speaking and listening to be respectful, considerate and generous in all their talking, thinking, planning and decision-making. Give them courage to say what needs to be said and humility to accept decisions with which they do not agree. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Nicole. We'll now move on to the apologies. There has been a leave of absence granted to councillor Sander from the fourteenth to the twenty-fourth of May. There has been a leave of absence and apology requested from councillor Dunn for tonight's meeting. So someone moving that way moved councillor Moores, seconded councillor Burke. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Confirmation of previous minutes. In that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. No debates. Put the item, all those in favour? It's unanimous. Disclosures of interest. Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Jackson?
Yes, I have to declare a non pecuniary interest with a significant conflict for the report PE eighteen twenty twenty-three and I have a personal relationship with the residents that are affected by this DA, so I'll leave the chamber.
Thank you. There are no petitions. We now go to public address. So we have here to discuss our report PE eighteen twenty twenty-three development application. So I'll ask councillor Jackson to leave at this point and invite Max Bowen from Perception Planning to the lecturn. So Max is speaking for the recommendation and you have three minutes to address council. Thank you.
Good evening, Lord Mayor and councillors. I'm Max Bowen, town planner for Perception Planning, speak on item thirteen-one for proposed re-subdivision of five into two lots, followed by construction of a detached geocoincy on both lots. Firstly, we would like to thank council staff for their assessment of the DA and associate a recommendation of approval. It has been a long and arduous process with considerable effort and compromise to reach this outcome. In response to the submissions received during the assessment process, the DA has undergone significant change to address the concerns of the community in areas of privacy, access and scale. To keep with the rural character of the area and preserve the privacy of the neighbouring residents, a redesign was completed, reducing the scale of the three closest dwellings to an acceptable size. The fourth has remained as is, but the sloping of the site can sit acceptable for screening purposes. Further screening through vegetation can be implemented if necessary to ensure the privacy for neighbouring properties. The positioning of the geocoincy ensures a consistent setback along Lovdell Road while allowing land restricted by ecology, bushfire and flood concerns to be utilised efficiently for residential purposes. Whilst speeding and increased traffic is considered an issue for current residents, we believe that the positioning of the driveway access provides the greatest level of visibility along the road and the addition of the geocoincies will assist in presenting Lovdell Road as a developed area, reducing the appetite for future speeding in the vicinity. Furthermore, this DA represents an opportunity to provide positive economic stimulus, generating work for local construction industries during a time of uncertainty. Taking the above into consideration on behalf of the proponent, I seek your support for the proposed development and council recommendation of approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just before we leave, are there any questions of Mr Bowen? No questions, please thank Mr Bowen for his presentation. Next up on report PE eighteen, we have Chris Spinks speaking against the recommendation. Please, Chris, come forward. Thank you, Mr Spinks, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you councillors. On behalf of the affected residents of Lovdell Road firstly affected by this DA, we would like to note several things of major concern to us all. The proposal for Camp Road as listed should not access from Lovdell Road as this is a very busy road and the proposed access roads are extremely close to Camp Road on a dangerous bend. Why isn't safety of residents and tourists of paramount concern to council? Why are the proposed driveways acceptable? We acknowledge the area is of popular demand to tourists and residents alike and development will occur in the area. Nearly every parcel of land adjacent to the Hunter Expressway has been bought by developers with intent to develop housing estates and allow easy access for commuters. We believe this is the intention for this subdivision proposal. Does council want to go down this path and turn a rural tourist area into more suburbs? The DA proposes a two-storey and a single-level house side by side on a side boundary and a further two single dwellings on a back boundary. Establishments of this proportion are not in character with the region and the tourism area. Houses should be spread out as it is a rural setting, not a housing estate. If this is to be passed by council based on the application criteria being met by government guidelines, then we ask these items to be addressed prior to approval. Access to be from Camp Road, not Lovdell Road. Fencing to both affected properties should be rectified as they in disrepair from the previous government ownership. We would like posten rail fencing in keeping with the rural aspect to keep the whole bordering fence lines back and sides. Native plants and screen noise, dust and for privacy in a style such as red robin lily pillies to be placed on applicant's side of the fencing to be sowed and maintained by the applicant. Plant screening for side and back boundaries of affected properties, planting to occur immediately after approval of the DA if granted, to allow time for screening to be established before commencement of any construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions before you leave for Mr Spinks? No questions, please thank Mr Spinks for his presentation. We'll now move to dealing with report PE eighteen twenty twenty-three. Having someone moved that way, moved councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Any debates councillor Watten?
Yeah, thank you Mister Mayor. It's more of a question that I sent through or a couple of questions that I sent through earlier, so hopefully there's no surprises here. The road that we're speaking about at the Camp Road intersection is quite dangerous. There's already numerous accidents that have happened along that stretch of road. And so I'm just wondering if it's feasible before, we should approach like the New South Wales Black Spot Programme through Transport for New South Wales before we even consider and get some kind of movement with that sort of things because it is a dangerous road? If we could get like a bit of discussion surrounding that, is feasible?
Director?
Thank you Mayor Saval. Thank you councillor Watten. The speed limit on the road is controlled by Transport for New South Wales, so it is possible that this is something that the traffic committee could look into. In terms of this particular application, it's been assessed by our traffic engineers and our view is that this particular application does not increase the safety hazards on this piece of road.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the other one that I just wanted to ask as well was with regards to speaking to the objections that were raised with regards to the proximity that on lot one and lot two that each building is, some people citing that it's too close to the boundary. Could you speak a little bit further into that?
Director?
Thank you Mayor Saval. As you will be aware from the plans that was submitted with the application, the setback of the buildings on proposed lot one are similar to the setbacks of other buildings already existing on that part of Lovdell Road. In terms of the proposed buildings on lot two, they have an orientation towards the balance of lot two, so they are orientated away from the existing buildings. Furthermore, those buildings are approximately eighty metres, sorry, the proposed new buildings are approximately eighty metres from the existing buildings and I just haven't got the distances from the actual boundary off the top of my head, but they're quite obvious on the plan how far they are from the actual boundaries.
Okay, and last one, just with regards to wastewater. There are concerns because we're looking at it's an extra nine bedrooms plus four, so lot one is a four-bedroom plus a nine-bedroom, correct? So that's thirteen beds. And then lot two, you're looking at eight bedrooms. So can you speak a little bit further to actual wastewater, the situation there?
Yep, through you Mister Mayor. A wastewater report was submitted by the applicant in conjunction with the DA and this demonstrated how they proposed to deal with the wastewater on-site. This report was reviewed by council's environmental health officers who agreed with the findings. A separate, what's called a section sixty-eight, application is required to be submitted and approved by council in respect to the disposal of wastewater. Generally with these situations where you have on-site disposal, it's all about the area you have to dispose and obviously these are large lots over forty hectares in size, so we do not believe that there will be any issues with respect to the disposal of wastewater on these sites.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No, no further debate. Let's put the item, all those in favour? Councillors Moores, Burke, Grine, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval, those against, councillors Watten, Olsen and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. John, can you? I think it's in this door. Okay, we'll now move on to the consideration and adoption of all reports by Englobo, councillor Burke.
Thank you Mister Mayor. Having read and considered the reports in the agenda relating to items NI four twenty twenty-three, notice of intention to deal with matters in a confidential session for report WI eighteen twenty twenty-three. PE twenty twenty twenty-three, local infrastructure contributions update. PE twenty-one, Greater Sessnock Job Strategy twenty thirty-six progress report. CC twenty-six, investment report for April twenty-three. CC twenty-eight, disclosures of interest in written returns. And CC twenty-nine twenty twenty-three, land acquisition for Sessnock, South Sessnock Mamwha. Council adopt the recommendations as printed on those items.
So those seconded, councillor Grine. No debate, we'll put those items, all those in favour? It's unanimous, yep. Okay. Moving to merrill minutes. I'll move MM one twenty twenty-three. It's disappointing to have to talk about this on what is We're Orange Wednesday. That is about supporting our local SES that do fantastic work around our community and as do all of our emergency service providers and we really support them. But this motion is to write to the state government and talk to them about the impacts that the cost shifting is having on council. Many people probably wouldn't be aware that councils across the state fund over eleven per cent of the, eleven per cent of the emergency services levy to go to funding emergency services. So we, by the state government choosing to not provide the subsidy that they have done in previous years, has meant that our budgets and plans that already been done, they're on exhibition now as we speak and we have a situation where our costs are going to go up because of this by a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So it's, makes it, that brings our total contribution for emergency services to seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, four hundred and one. We would love to spend that money on other things around our local areas and not have to include those charges as part of our rates, but because the budgets are there and draft things are done, it's hard for us to get any difference when the state government also sets the rate peg of what the increases of council rates can be by each council. So when that's set by them and then we get a last minute addition like this, it really eats into the budgets that we have. So my plan is to write to them as part of a campaign by local government New South Wales to ask them to reconsider this decision. Councillor Olsen?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. This is certainly worth supporting your motion here tonight. It's just very disturbing that our new state government has come into play, our new Labour state government's come into play and they're trying to crucify us so quickly by increasing this by two hundred and three thousand on our council. It's not just our council's got this increase, some of it up to a million dollars, they've got to increase theirs by. And it's sending councils broke. It's typical of what the state government does, they do these deals behind closed doors and send the money, bills over to us and we've got to pay them. And they're doing all this cost shifting all the time. We're paying more and more of our ratepayers' money for services the state government should be supplying and all it's doing is putting pressure on our budget, pressure on this council to be able to supply the services that we should be supplying. And they're eventually gonna, I think they're eventually trying to send us all broke with all this rate pegging and then saying, here you are, you're gonna pay an extra two hundred and three thousand dollars, which brings us up to nearly eight hundred thousand dollars for emergency services. I'm not saying emergency services don't deserve money, I just don't think local councils should be paying for it. It should be the state government that should be paying for these type of services. It should never have been passed on to us in the first place by state governments previously and it should be always maintained by state government, not by council, so I'll be supporting your motion Mayor.
Thank you. With no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour? It's unanimous. Any motions of urgency? No motions of urgency. Move on to rescission motion RM two twenty twenty-three. Moving that way councillor Olsen, seconded councillor Jurd, speaking on?
Yeah. Mayor, at the last meeting, we had this proposal come to council and we asked questions and the questions weren't answered. So we, before I could support this motion, I had to get the answers given to us and what we've since found out, I don't know if every councillor's read the memo that come out to councillor Jurd, that the report was wrong. And that's disturbing, that a report that comes to this council for us to support, and I've heard councillors in here plenty of times say that we have to support the staff, they're the experienced and trained staff, we have to believe what they tell us. Well, this report was wrong. Now, the whole thing is, we asked why it's about the six blocks? Well, there was no six blocks together. There is, what's happened is the owner has sold off one lot and kept another lot and wants to put a house on the other lot. He already had a house on the original block that he owned and the other one didn't have a building entitlement, so he's asked for a building entitlement, which was many, many years ago, was taken out of the system of all these smaller blocks having building entitlements. So I'm glad we got this report back. I'm very disappointed from the planning department, our planning department, to have a report that's come in wrong to us. I just don't know how many other reports have come into us that's been wrong or misleading and that's maybe why I previously put up a motion and had confidence in their department.
Councillor Olsen, I'd just ask you to go back on that, I wouldn't accuse council staff of misleading us.
I said that the report was misleading. Didn't I say that? Is that what I said? I'm not sure what I said.
Accusing councillors of, council staff of misleading, I think.
The report was misleading there. The report was misleading, wasn't it?
I believe there were some minor errors in the report which were noted in the memo.
Well, okay, so misled me. Maybe it didn't misled anyone else, but misled me, okay? And I'll say that the report was incorrect and the part, Mr Mickelson has admitted that the report was incorrect and if the report come through as being correct, that the owner, the owner of that block had sold another block and was going to build on the next one, there's no way I would have supported it on the night and I don't think any councillor here should be supporting that because that is getting a building entitlement on a block that's not entitled to it, that means every other person in Sessnock that owns, Sessnock LGA that owns small acreage is now going to come in with no building entitlement and get a building entitlement. We're setting precedents and that was changed way back in the eighties and here we are, just double dipping. It depends, I suppose it depends, I don't know. I don't know who the applicant is, I have no idea, but I don't know. I suppose it depends on how they word their application, but I have seen other people being refused this type of stuff and I don't want to set a precedent.
Okay, no further debate, we'll now vote on the rescission motion, so those in favour of the rescission motion? Councillors Watten, Olsen and Jurd and those against? Councillors Jackson, Moores, Burke, Grine, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval, I'll declare it lost. We'll now move on to report PE nineteen twenty twenty-three, Climate Change Resilience Plan. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke, speaking. Councillor Hill?
Thank you Mayor Saval. I'd just like to speak briefly on some of the information provided in this report here to us about the, some of the benefits of this climate change resilience plan. The report provided to us provides some information on the financial implications of implementing this, this plan and this report. And on page one hundred and thirteen of the report, you can read that the estimated benefits of cost savings to council over the twenty-five year period of implementation of this plan will be a cost savings of six million dollars as of the time of the forecasts within this report. I think that on, even just on the basis of the financial benefits, not even without the considerations for the environmental benefits of this plan, the financial benefits is a bit of a no-brainer. If this is, if this is a plan and something that council can implement that can save us, you know, six million dollars over the twenty-five year period, I think that it's easy for us to, and easy for me to support the implementation of this plan.
Councillor Olsen?
Yeah, Mayor, I just got a question. You have obviously read this proposal and I'm assuming that you're gonna support this climate change plans tonight, is that correct?
Well, we haven't finished the debate on the report.
Well, I'm assuming that you've read the report and you understand what the climate change policy is?
Yes.
Correct? Yes? So why did you get a new four-wheel drive diesel when we're recommending electric vehicles?
Councillor Olsen, any vehicle that I have is in accordance with the council's vehicle policy.
The policy here, I'm asking you a question.
Councillor Olsen, we're not here to debate that, we're here to talk about the?
And in the policy, in this policy, we are talking about getting all electric vehicles. Why did you buy diesel and not electric? Shouldn't you be leading by example?
I've answered the question councillor Olsen.
Oh, you're not gonna answer that question?
I've already answered the question.
Okay, so another question, should you not be leading by example?
I've answered the question.
That's another question I've asked you.
On this, councillor Olsen, we're not here to debate?
What car you drive?
What car I drive.
Okay, so it's okay for you to drive a diesel, but for the rest of the council and the rest of the public, we're gonna have to drive electric. Okay, fair enough.
Councillor Jurd?
Thank you Mister Mayor. This plan is going to cost us about four point four million dollars, majority of the money from the roads budget. Like to know why we keep taking money off the roads when they're falling apart and when we are about to take out a seventeen million dollar loan for Wallonby Road. I can't believe we have these drop-in sessions and myself as a ratepayer went and asked questions. I asked the cost, which I was told above, and where the money would come from. I asked, how do we know there is climate change when we have human intervention? Staff said, we know about cloud seeding, we don't do that anymore. Hmm. Why is the legislation still current? I asked. Other members of the public asked questions and then I said to the staff members on the side, do you think it's right that we have a code of conduct about talking to the media? And the mayor spoke about me, calling me a conspiracy theorist? Because I asked, what infrastructure was for the smart cities, which is all the Hunter regional planning document that I was talking about on the night of council? Or how much would it cost the ratepayers? They said, no, it wasn't right. I will always ask the hard questions. I believe we need transparency in this council and the bullying that is happening to me with the news articles and now this written in the, in the plan, quote, I wanted to speak to the council officers on the park on the first of April and I and my walking group went that way on purpose to see them, but we were blockaded by a bunch of anti-climate people carrying on about some conspiracy. I heard one woman saying she was in the news that day, so I went looking and figured out it was our own councillor Jurd. I saw they're harassing the council staff and scaring people away. My own elected representative stopped me from engaging with this process because I believed differently to her. I was disgusted in her behaviour, undemographic, divisive nonsense, shame on her, end of quote. Firstly, I'd like this person to reach out, I think it'd be amazing to be a researcher for me to know who I was from a distance without my name, but there you go, another label. Something needs to change because after Friday's events and council not making sure I was all right after almost being physically assaulted, this person pre-planned the attack, now it's got to the point that I can't go anywhere by myself because council is allowing this bullying to happen. I've put all in the paperwork and spoke to the office of local government and now the police. Ask yourself residents, why I can't ask these questions for you? Why was that written in information about climate change and people's thoughts on if we should accept it? Thank you.
Councillor Burke?
Thank you Mister Mayor. For me, this climate change policy isn't about whether I believe in climate change or not, that's not the debate and I totally support what councillor Hill has said tonight. Um, and I totally support what councillor Hill has said tonight. Uh, yes, it, there are, um, costs expenditures upfront over a period of time. But for me, the savings, um, of six million dollars, and that was based on previous, uh, calculations. And, and I would imagine that, that saving has improved, uh, since then. Um, you know, we, if we, uh, if we have this plan in place, it allows us to then access grants that can support our local community. And if we don't support the plan tonight, then we're saying no to all the, the opportunity, uh, for grant money to be able to implement things. So not only would we be saying, well, we don't want the cost saving over that twenty five year period, uh, we'd also be saying, no, we don't want grants. And that therefore I prefer to have the money, uh, over a long period of time that we can be putting back into, um, into projects on the ground. So for me, I, I support this, but I still make the point that this, this debate here is not about whether you believe climate change is a real thing. This is about this council having a resilience plan that's going to allow us to save money over a longer period of time that can be put into important projects for our community.
Yeah. Councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. Um, look, I'd, I would echo the, the sentiment that this isn't about our views on climate change. We're not a federal government or a state government or anything. This is about getting our policies in place to get the best return for our residents, which is, which is what this policy will do, um, with a net financial benefit. Um, but I'd, I'd probably just like to, um, to touch on the, the consultation process if I could. Um, Mister Mayor, I was fortunate enough to leave our briefing on Wednesday night and attend Paxton, where there was a, um, a drop in session for our, um, our operational plan. Um, and it was a wonderful opportunity to talk to, to residents that have, had come along with questions to ask. Um, some people come along to these sessions with no questions to ask, they just want information. Some people come along wanting clarification of things that they've heard people say or, or, you know, rumours on the grapevine or whatever. And it's wonderful that our staff can be there with professional knowledge and, and details to be able to send people away with factual information. Um, on this, this particular, uh, resilience, what do we call it, climate change resilience plan, um, we've had some, some fairly, um, opposing views, uh, stressed from this. Um, and I think it's great that we've been able to listen to people, um, with, with all of the different opinions that they have on this. Um, and it ranges from, I strongly oppose this, kind regards, Q K, to, um, there are people that I don't agree with this plan, people that say faster would be even better. Um, there, there's people that strongly and passionately support this, there's people that come along with practical solutions, um, involving indigenous people in the action plan, weed spraying to be more effective in Wallonby. Uh, then no, because we shouldn't be doing this. Be respectful, that's all. Um, Mister Mayor, there's, there's quite a, a range of views from this, um, even down to more trees in car parks. Um, and, and I will say that it was disappointing to read that people were, uh, intimidated or fearful or whatever it was of being involved in the process. Um, I think there's probably a more appropriate way that we could gain this information. If we have questions of staff, um, it's probably not appropriate to be involved in the, the community consultation section. Um, I, I really think that it's a good thing that we're doing as a council to inform the community and to take things out, both online as well as in person. Uh, I think a variety of venues that we go to to reach as many people in the community. Um, and I'd, I was, I was very disappointed to read from, from not one but two people that complained about that event on the first of April. Um, I think it was, it was good to see that our community groups, they'd actually moved their walking trail for the day in order to participate. It, it's, it's very disappointing that they felt intimidated and that they weren't allowed to participate. And it's even more disappointing to see the people involved in that. So I would just like to thank our staff for their proactive approach to taking information out to the community. And I would probably like to ask our council representatives to be a little bit more thoughtful in their actions. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. There's such a thing called defamation. And, um, I'm really concerned that things have been written that it can't be validated. Who's verifying these things when people's names have been broadcast on council reports? Like, who's verifying these things? Where's this information coming from? I have deep concerns about this because this could be anyone, like, saying this stuff, like, this is, I, 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 I just object to the whole fact of, like, you know, that this is, people could have, like, people have it in for a Labour representative or Liberal or anything like that, and someone just have a go. And then it's like broadcast, I think that's wrong. And to say that's a good thing, I think that's bad, like, in all honesty, and simply, simply put, like, you've got to be so careful with these things when it's in writing like this and we're going, oh, that's a good thing. I, I strongly disagree with that. How can you verify that?
Okay, no further debate. Let's, uh, put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillors, uh, Jackson, Moores, Burke, Grine, uh, Hill, Hawkins and Savell, those against. Councillors Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving to report C C twenty four twenty twenty three, Resolutions Tracking Report, moving that way. Uh, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. No debates. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report C C twenty five twenty twenty three, uh, quarterly budget, uh, quarterly review of the delivery programme, moving that way. Uh, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Uh, speaking councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just want to quickly ask a question because I'm still finding sometimes these, um, reports a bit hard to understand. Uh, Sandy Creek Road on page two seventy two says it's deferred. And then on page two seventy six, it says it's on track. So could, um, our, or a, a director of works, could he explain for me? Please? I don't know.
I'll take that on notice, um, if I can please, Mister Mayor.
Okay.
It's fine.
Excuse me, Mister Mayor, would you know, like, what that means? Because it, one bit it says deferred and then another part says on track. It makes it a bit hard because one of the council meetings we had, we, um, we won the motion to make sure that Sandy Creek didn't get deferred. So I just want to make sure it's not getting deferred again.
So the, the different, so you're talking about page two seventy two?
Yep, two seventy two and then page two seventy six.
So two seventy.
Because they're two different things, so it might be still on track, it's just, I'm not sure.
Seventy two said it's a grant funding dependent project. So probably relying on grants to progress that, that project. And I, I don't know the details, but they're, they're under different project things. Sandy Creek Road is a road that has multiple different sections of, of projects on it. And it would be potentially listed under a number of different funding sources. So, um, some sections may be on track and some might have other.
So that, uh, just, um, quickly, so what we did, made sure we didn't defer last time, that wouldn't be that same section, would it? That might be, have to be taken on notice, I'm just curious.
Have to, the director would have to take it on, on notice.
Yes, please.
Um, councillor Hill, uh, councillor Hill, you, you're moving the motion, so you'll, please ask councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. If I can just ask either the director of, uh, corporate or the manager, uh, just in regards to, um, what our current, uh, spend on capital works for this financial year is?
So for the chief financial officer.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, to today, sorry, I have a minute right here, we are at just a little bit over forty one million.
And, and if I could ask to Mister Mayor, what, um, roughly, it doesn't have to be spot on, but what we would be, um, the, in the previous year, financial year at this, this current time?
Chief Financial Officer.
Uh, it's tough to say. Last year for our full year, we spent just below twenty nine million, so we're about forty percent ahead of where we were, um, at the end of last year's spend.
Thank you. That's, I, Mister Mayor, yeah, I think it's just important to, to note that there is a significant increase in capital works that's happening around, uh, the local government area. Um, you know, having gone from just under twenty nine million in an entire year to already sitting at, um, you know, just over forty one million. I know there's not too long to go in the financial year, um, so that we won't see that go up too much. But to see that we are putting, uh, funds into the capital works and getting works done, uh, is a really positive thing. Um, good to see that, um, you know, the fifty five percent of the programmes, um, have been on track. Uh, you know, we're not, uh, carrying forward a huge significant amount like we have seen, uh, in, in the past as well. So, uh, I think that's a, a great testament to the staff and to the, to the new G M as well, um, in making sure that, uh, programmes and projects, I should say, um, are getting completed on the ground.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, through, through you, Mister Mayor, just, um, saying clarification and question as, um, councillor Jurd had on page, um, two seventy seven for Dickinson Street Curry. Just to, um, bring it to your attention that, um, Dickinson Street Curry, Mount View Road, Sandy Creek Road are, are of great, um, interest now to the community. We get a lot of feedback from the community, so, um, to make sure that it's on public record that, um, we want to make those, um, projects a priority and, um, not have it deferred further than twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four provisional plan. I'm sure us as councillors and the community would be, um, very appreciative. So I'm just, um, to, um, take that on, on notice as well, um, director and put it in, uh, in the forefront of your mind for the, for us in the, in the community. Thank you.
Okay, no further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, it's unanimous. Um, moving to report C C twenty seven twenty twenty three, Quarterly Budget Review Statement. Uh, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Grine. No debates. Put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report C C thirty twenty twenty three, um, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor, councillor Grine. So C C thirty is in the, uh, supplementary agenda item. So speaking on this item, councillor Olson.
Yeah, just a, a question about, uh, borrowings, um, that this is pushing, cha- will change our debt service ratio, I would assume. And then with another seventeen million coming up in the near budget for Wallonby Road, there's twenty one million, over twenty one million dollars. I, I would like to know where that puts our debt service ratio. If that can be supplied to councillors, please.
The director.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Olson. That was supplied to councillors last week and the memo went out on Friday, I believe.
Didn't, didn't have a debt service ratio on it.
Yeah.
It wasn't in the email.
No, I, I, I think I recall it being in there, but.
It wasn't in the email. It wasn't actually a service ratio. Can I, if it hasn't, if it's not in there, I'll double check, I could be wrong. And I'll apologize, but if it's, if I'm right, um, can we get, know what the debt service ratio will be once we've got this loan and the seventeen million dollar loan, please?
Thank you, councillor Olson. I will take that on notice. I will point out that, um, um, the debt service ratio for this year will be very close to being calculated when we finalise our accounts in June. Um, the other one may be a little bit more problematic to, um, calculate. It will depend on when, um, such funds are borrowed. Um, it is unlikely we'll be borrowing that, that amount of money that you mentioned, um, in the next twelve months. However, that depending, it may change. So we'll get an answer out to you as best we can. Um, but it is on that proviso that, um, until such time as we're ready or need to borrow the extra money, um, the debt service ratio will be an estimate.
Yeah. Councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a very hard question really for the director because obviously if we was going to borrow that much money, it wouldn't be over a one year period. It would be we're borrowing it as we need it, as, as we're going, not all in one chunk. Thank you.
Uh, with no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillors, Jack, uh, it's unanimous. Uh, moving on to W I sixteen twenty twenty three, uh, moving that way, councillor Grine, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking, that councillor Grine.
Uh, thank you, Mesavell. Um, can I just say that I've spoken to the, the committee for the Richmond Vale Rail Trail, who've been working on this tirelessly for decades. Um, and I'm glad to see this come up and, and I'd like to thank, you know, council officers and especially their thanks to Kate Harris, um, for finally finalising this concept plan. Um, we're so excited to have the ref up now. And, and it's important that we don't just let this one sit on the shelf, considering the millions that have already been put into it, how it's going to connect our, our community to other communities. Um, we do know it's in the regional plan and I, I just want to say, you know, thank you very much. I know a lot of people have put a lot of hard effort and work into getting this to this stage. And hopefully it just doesn't sit there. We get some grant money to actually get it across the line and we can start walking or riding or, you know, getting on the trail and, and having a look at what, what's out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mesavell. Um, I echo, uh, councillor Grine's sentiments on it. Herself and I both work, um, have worked tirelessly with the community to sort of help support this, this project since we were being elected. And I'd just like to, um, make, make the point of this report that's been given, put forward to us, uh, included information on public submissions made for, for the, uh, review of environmental factors. And, and this, this exhibition and community engagement period might be one of the, the most engaged items I've seen in my time here now on council. Over a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and twenty four positive submissions were entered in support of this project. Um, and only three additional submissions were in opposition to it. That is a, a fantastic, um, outcome from, and engagement from the community to, just, just to show and prove how, um, how excited they are for this project and how keen they are to see it get over the line. Uh, we still have quite a ways to go and I appreciate the effort that's already gone into it and the effort that will be to come. Um, and thanks again to the staff, uh, who have worked on, on this report and this, getting this over the line and for the fantastic engagement from our community, uh, on this, on this issue.
No further debate. Um, we'll put the item, those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh, moving on to report W I seventeen twenty twenty three, uh, moving that way, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking this item, councillor Olson.
Yes, Mayor, item, um, eleventh avenue, Millfield, and Millfield Road, Millfield. There's been a technical review of the intersection and there's, uh, new line marking requests to be put in. My question is, how can this road be approved even as a road when the road is only two hundred and fifty, four hundred mil from the boundary of the fence? There's no footpath.
Question. Uh, correct.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, the road, location of the road within the road reserve is, is, uh, is fit for purpose, councillor?
Sorry?
The road formation within the road reserve is fit for purpose?
The road is only runs along the boundary of the fence. That's, that's illegal, isn't it?
The road is within the road reserve.
Sorry?
The road is within the road reserve.
Road reserve. So somewhere along the line, that road was approved to be right on the boundary of the fence line. Yet school bus drops kids off on that corner and they walk down that road. Because that road was never that big.
The road was built within the road reserve?
I think.
Okay.
Direct to that.
Oh, they're saying it's built.
Uh, no further debate. We'll put the, uh, items, all those in favour. Uh, councillors, Jackson, Moores. Uh, councillors, Jackson, Moors, Burke, Grine, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Savell, those against, uh, councillors Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report B N eight, twenty twenty three, our proposal for the Curry Curry Festival. Uh, councillor Grine moving that way.
Thank you.
The item seconded councillor Hill, uh, speaking.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I'm so happy to see this, this NOM come up, um, and do you want me to read it out? That council seeks great grant funding to activate Curry Curry Town Centre by creating and delivering a new event called the Curry Curry Festival, or the Curry 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 Festival. Um, designing and installing three D public street art that complements the Curry Curry murals that we currently have. I think this is, uh, something that we don't actually have in Curry right now. And with the amount of works that is actually happening for the beautification stuff that in our main street and we have Cole Brown Rotary Park, I think it's being underutilized in the wintertime. We should have an, we deserve a night festival. We've already got the name, no one can take it from us, um, you know. Go the dogs. You know, a, a Curry Curry Festival that's done, you know, with some, some serious backing. Like we see Maitland Council and Newcastle Councils have got fire pits and all these other, um, all this, you know, little, little niggly things that we, we deserve that in our town. We deserve that in our L G A. So I think this will be a great opportunity for council to, to, you know, get its feet wet and bring it to Curry Curry. Thank you.
Here councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is fantastic, uh, on all four events, uh, in our local area. Um, not only does it support our townships, it brings jobs, brings tourism, uh, and we thrive on that. Uh, I do have, uh, a slight amendment if councillor Grine would be so kind to, uh, take that on. Uh, no, it's short and sweet. Uh, so it reads that council seek grant funding for business activation in Sessnock Local Government Area by points one and two stay the same, leave your Curry Curry Festival. Uh, but point three, that the general manager investigate other business activation opportunities. So I'm hoping that councillor Grine and Hill might take that on board, uh, into their actual motion.
Happy to accept that councillor Grine and, and Hill.
I, I think that.
So that now becomes the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think that if we are looking at, um, business activation in, in our local government area, the grants that this would fall under are significant, that, you know, they, they can be, um, over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, and upwards. So I just think if there are other things that we can be doing in the L G A, let's capitalize on that while we're, um, looking at these two great initiatives that councillor Grine has brought to the table.
Here councillor Olson.
Uh, yeah, question, who, if we're successful getting finances, who's gonna run it?
Uh, the dr- director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it would be coordinated through the economic development activity of council.
Sorry?
Through the economic development, uh, activity in council, so economic development manager would be responsible.
Right, so we've got no financial plan for this, no idea what we're gonna do, it's just gonna be a curry festival. I, I, I just, it, it's, it's a great, it might be a great idea on paper, but what, what is it? When is it gonna be held? How's it gonna be run? We, when we go chasing funding, we need all this information. And I can't see any of it here, um, and I can't see any idea of what it's gonna cost our council. Why, why don't we use our town coordinators to, supposed to be chasing these type of things, to do this for Curry? We've got a town coordinator in Curry. Why aren't they doing that? Why aren't they running it? Why aren't we, why is it? I, I, I don't know what we're voting for. We're voting for, to chase a grant for a Curry Curry Festival. When is it? What is it? How's it gonna run? Who's gonna run it? Who's gonna be in charge of it? And who's gonna take all the glory for it? That's the, that's the thing. This is the thing what we're doing here, was we're saying we're trying to do something, but what are we doing? We've not, we've got no actual plan. If someone from outside of the community wanted to run something like this, they'd have to come to council with a financial plan, a plan of how it's gonna be run. All these types of things have to be brought into council before we even consider voting for it. Yet a councillor brings it in and it's okay, we'll put it through. We have no idea what it's going to be, none whatsoever. And I'm disappointed that this can come to council like this, saying, let's put on a Curry Curry Festival. I, I have no problem putting it on, but how, when, what, who's gonna run it? We don't know nothing, nothing at all.
I, I think that's covered in, in point one councillor Olson, which actually talks about.
Who's creating?
Creating it. As, as the director just commented, it would fall under the, uh, the responsibilities of the, uh, economic development team.
E- economic development team, so we're gonna create work for them, but we might not get any funding, so we need funding to, to cover the cost of the staff to be able to chase the funding. Because they're gonna, you can't just put a plan into, to, to someone to get chase funding and say, we wanna put on a Curry Curry Festival. That's what, you gotta have more information. So staff time is gonna be taken up to do this. Alright? This is, this is great thinking and great forward planning, but there's no organization structure put to us on what you want to do. It's just a vision. And until we have a plan, there's nothing more that we should be voting on.
Uh, next speaker councillor Painter.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm excited to, um, have more, um, events in Curry to showcase the, um, especially the new works that have been happening in the beautification of the, of the area. So I'm excited to have this, um, come to Curry to showcase it. Um, and to, um, have, um, an event for the residents of Curry and the family of friends and, and visitors of the area. So, um, I'll be, um, excited for it and can't wait to, um, see a kind of appreciation. I'm sure the staff of those who are, um, involved in organizing will, um, do a competent job.
Here, uh, closing debate, uh, councillor Grine.
Thank you councillor, um, Painter for your support. Um, as far as councillor Olson's concerned, um, you know, this is what this NOM is about. Let's investigate it. Let's actually have a look and see what we can actually do as council. That's what we're here for, right? Bring some, bring some tourism into our town, more tourism, more money, more jobs for our, for our town. That's what I'm fighting for. So, so as far as I'm concerned councillor Olson, um, I'm in, I'm highly in support of protecting our community and growing our community. So a night festival for a Curry Curry Festival is what I'm supporting here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll now, uh, vote on the item, uh, all those in favor. It's unanimous. The gallery, I'll call the, the gallery to order, please. Uh, I'll ask the gallery to come to order. The, now moving on to report B N nine, twenty twenty three, uh, councillor Grine.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, moving that way, seconded councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Savell. Uh, my next motion is that council invites our state representative Clayton Barr and our federal members Merrill Swanson and Dan Rapicoli to a proposed workshop held at council with all councillors and relevant staff to outline a stronger advocacy proposal to cover a broad range of our local issues. I, um, I'm very supportive of this because I believe that we need to have so much more communication and stronger advocacy, not just from one team, not just from a political team, I mean from all of us councils. We are on the ground. We deal with our community every day. Um, we get phone calls, emails, we, we get stopped on the street and, and there's so many issues that need to be dealt with. So why not get in a room with all of us councillors, transparency and like, you know, work together to build our community and, and get some better grants coming through to help grow our community and help support our community members.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm all for this because it's about time these people who are supposed to be representing the Hunter come down and listen to what we have to say and what we hear every day from the people and the residents of this town. They would know, Swan, Dan Rapicoli would also know of what grants that are available that we can go and jump for and start applying for and they could give us the inside information of things that we don't know what we are able to go for. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Savell. I've, I'm, it's a great idea. I think it's awesome. I totally support it. Um, I've had a little bit to do with Merrill Swanson. Uh, she was, she was actually great, like working with the, some N D I S things that over at Weston. Um, I do wanna ask the question though, didn't we propose this last year with Clayton Barr being a part of some meetings and he came to one briefing? So my question would be, are they interested? Because, um, we didn't really see much more than like at the briefing, the door was open. Like, I wanna talk to them. I think every reasonable council would like to talk to them and, and pick their ear, uh, pick their brain, sorry, not pick their ear, that's gross. Um, it's been a big day. So, yeah, we're, are they, are they open to it? I don't know. Yeah? Okay, cool. Yeah, I'll see it happen and it's great.
Okay, no further debate. Uh, we'll put the item, all those in favor. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to report B N ten, twenty twenty three, uh, councillor Jurd. Uh, moving that way, the item seconded councillor Olson, speaking of.
Okay, s- sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just thinking, oh my god, I gotta get this open. Okay, so this notice of motion is that ca- uh, that the general managers start negotiations with the road owner of Jacaranda Grove and Camelia Close about talk, taking over the ownership. Um, I can see it speak, can I still? Yep. I remember council informing me months ago when I mentioned Sandy Creek Road residents had contacted me about them not going to pay their rates and fix the road themselves and council informed me that it was illegal to do so. That they do not own the road, so they are legally not permitted to do so. Um, they could be sued. Now here we are with Jacaranda Grove and Camelia Close. These residents have been illegally fixing these roads since day one. What they're asking is council take over ownership so they can have potholes filled by council rather than them as a lot of the residents are aging and finding it extremely hard. The owner of the road will gift it to council as long as they don't have to pay the transfer cost. I also like to, uh, add council renamed Camelia Close. It was the whole road Jacaranda Grove. Um, so my question is, if council rename the road, should that not mean they own the road? Um, they don't put up signs on roads that they don't own now, do they? Next question I have, how has a development happened without an access road?
Is that, that was it? Yep, yep. Uh, any further debate? Uh, councillor Olson.
Y- yes, uh, Mayor, this, uh, if you, if you lived in these, this, these streets, the, the residents out there aren't asking for a new highway. They aren't asking for the road to be rebuilt. They just want some, uh, some support from council. They pay their land rates, but they actually don't have, own their access road. It's owned by a, a, a private company that don't want it, that don't touch it, who won't support it and won't, and would quite happily give, get rid of, wants to get rid of it. Council owns the Ellington Drive road that goes in to there and patches the road to Jacaranda. But once you get onto Jacaranda and Camelia Close, they are owned by a private developer who had nothing to do with the development of these two streets. And, and the properties around there, it was a previous developer done it. He doesn't want the land, he's not gonna touch the land. But the liabilities there become a problem for those residents by repairing that road on a private ownership, someone else owns the land and they're doing the work on that land. Now, if they do something and someone gets hurt, who's gonna get in trouble? The owner's gonna say, you don't, I'm not paying, I'm not in trouble. I'm not co- copying any crap for this. He might stop them from actually using the road, or he can actually stop them from using the road. He can, he can stop them from patching the road. So these people might not even have access to their property because it's privately owned and it was never ever part of the development, the roads were existing. And I believe when it was proved way back, when, I don't even think I was on council and it was way, way before my time, I think, the, the intention was the council would take those roads once the property was developed and the council would maintain them. If, this is different to a lot, there's, in the report, they're saying there's about forty six other, forty six other roads in, in the town in the L G A that's privately owned. This is different to a lot of others. This is not owned by the residents. This is not a road, an access road that's provided and been built for subdivisions. This is a road that was existing when it was the mine site. And it was owned by the mine and it's there, it exists. It's a real problem for these residents and all they ask is that the ownership goes back to council and then council can go up there. When they come down Ellington Drive and fix the potholes, when they drive up there, they can fix their potholes as well. They have transport vehicles going in, they have garbage trucks coming in, they have all these other things coming in there. But council doesn't do anything to help these people. And for safety and for these people's peace of mind, they know that they'll have access to their properties for the rest of their ongoing life. And when they sell that property, there's gonna be no issues of someone buying their properties when they move on. That with this access road, I just think it's common sense that council takes this road on, these two roads on. And council has put the names on there, they put the signposts up, they changed Cam- to Cam- Camelia Close's, which is showing that they have some sort of ownership of that area. And I think it's just, it, it would be, the legal cost would, would be minor. Um, possibly could be as much as maybe ten thousand dollars maybe, which in this, where these people are paying more than that in land rates and, uh, their road isn't getting maintained. And I just think it's fair if we were to support these residents.
Uh, speaking councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, uh, agree with this at the moment, uh, councillor Olson, because it doesn't sit well with me. Because if we start taking roads of people that, developers that say, I don't want it, you can have it. I mean, we're just gonna open the floodgates for every other road in this town that owned and should be responsible by the developer and not the council. So we, we've got enough holes to fill without being given any more. Thank you.
Here councillor Burke.
Uh, oh, did you hear that John? Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, part of the, part of councillor notice of motions are to put forward sources of funding. This is gonna cost council money. Uh, it talks, uh, in the report, the comments from the, um, from the director is that, uh, cost of ownerships, uh, over the next twenty four years being estimated at one point two million dollars. So I guess if we are gonna take ownership, um, councillor Jurd, I, I guess just looking for you to tell us where that money will come from, what roads will miss out, uh, in the L G A, uh, or Ward A for that fact, um, to be able to fund this. Uh, and it's probably easy to say that, you know, yes, there are forty six private roads and, you know, that this is a, a different scenario. But as soon as you do one, why wouldn't we do forty six? And then that's gonna cost us more money. Um, there's forty six private roads, uh, in the Sessnock Local Government Area. Uh, this isn't alone. This, this road is no different to those forty six. It's still classed. It even has in the report, um, that Jacaranda Grove and Camelia Close are over, um, the lot, which is privately owned. It states in the report there who it's privately owned by. Um, if the road needs to be updated and maintained, I, you know, I feel sorry for the residents, uh, though it is a private road. Um, and unfortunately, uh, one point two million dollars isn't just a small amount to find, um, so therefore I won't be supporting, uh, this tonight.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, just a brief question perhaps to the director of works in regards to a comment from councillor Olson. He, he had, held, holds a concern that the private owner of the road could, in some circumstance, deny access of the residents who use the road to access their property. Do, what, does? Do, does the, the owner of that private land have a legal right to deny people access to their place of residence?
Director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, councillor Hill, the, the owner of the property, because it is a privately owned, um, lot does have that ability to do so, but, um, obviously has not chosen to do so at this point in time. And without going through the, you know, the, the development, um, uh, the instruments or the, the conditions that might have been set with that development back in, when it was completed, we have no idea what, what agreement's been made with all of the lot owners.
All right. Councillor Painter.
Yeah, just as a, um, point of clarification for the residents that live there, if some of their rights are allocated towards, uh, road maintenance. Should maybe some of their refund, rights be refunded to them so they can maintain their own road? Because if council's not gonna take responsibility for it, shouldn't they get maybe a portion of that back so they could maintain their own road?
Well, I would think that would be, there would be many residents and there are many residents that live on state roads as well that are not, uh, not owned or maintained by council, but, um, but there would be plenty of driving on council road, so I, I don't think that'd be an option. Uh, councillor Hawkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, uh, just, just for my piece of mind, didn't we have a similar issue to this where the owner of Hes wanted to give us their Hes Road infrastructure to maintain?
The director.
Um, thank you. There is a private road into Hes. Um, council is the proud owner of, I think, four parts sections of that road but not the entirety of the road. Um, so it is a private road owned and maintained by the owner.
And the parts that we took possession of, they were up to the standard that we required them to be. It's just in here, it says that this road isn't to the standard required. Would there be works required on this section of road before we would consider?
There was a council resolution in relation to the compulsory acquisition of, of those parcels of, of land or road uh, in, in the Hes, um, setup. I would think that, um, it was a, a standard, whether it was a gold-plated standard, I would probably say no, just because of the age of, of the road by the time we had acquired them. Um, that road has been out there for quite a period of time. Um, but from having driven on that at various points in time, um, the road in the entrance and, um, into the Hes subdivision is, is a fairly reasonable standard.
Thank you.
Uh, in closing debate, councillor Jerd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, there was a question earlier from councillor Burke about where the funding would come from. I would assume it would go in with tonight's, um, Curry, Curry Festival into the next budget review to look at where we could fund this from. My main concern is just that there's about twenty five residents that if this this person that owns this road decides to close off access, there's twenty five residents that, um, will not have access to their property. So, but that's all I can say. Thank you.
Uh, no further debate. We'll now put the item, those in favour. Uh, councillors Painter, Watten, Olson and Jerd. Those against, uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Burke, Grine, Hill, Hawkins and Saval. I'll declare it lost. Uh, moving on to report B N eleven twenty twenty three. Uh, councillor Jerd, the motion seconded. Uh, councillor Olson, just speaking, councillor Jerd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Always gotta press the buzzer and nearly turn it off because you've already on it. Okay, so this notice of motion I have is a webpage upgrade for submissions. That council create a category on the, on the homepage of its council webpage listing items requiring a submission from the residents on council project. Reason I brought this forward is I have had, and I have said on many occasions that I find the council website terrible. Um, it is because I'm dyslexic. I have, residents ask how to use it and where to find the information and I can't help them. After a few have said this to me, this idea is actually from residents to have a submissions tab so that when they are looking for a draft out on exhibition or a D A, they can go to this one handy spot. A lot of them, a lot still don't know about the Together website and I'm going, gonna have to say it's just as confusing. So a vote for this is voting in favour of residents asking for you to understand they are having trouble with the website and would like to have it more user friendly for the residents of this town. Thank you.
Uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mr Saval. Um, in some aspects, I think of some of the systems we use, I, I sometimes agree with councillor Jerd and, you know, in regards to the D A tracker is something I've had some, some trouble getting used to using. Um, and I do my best to sort of help the community now that I have a better understanding about it. Um, and I think in the past, the council website has been a little less accessible. However, over the, the past few months, in a lot of the, councillor Grine and I and councillor Painter have done quite a lot of community consultation down in, in Ward D and we do quite a lot of interaction with both the community and staff on items that are on public exhibition. And I've, I've, I've come to become quite familiar with the with council's front page of their website and the areas where residents can go to make submissions. Um, councillor Jerd's nom here about creating a category on the homepage of the council website. Um, I, I think in part it already exists here on the, um, if you, if you just Google Cessnock Council and click on the link and you get the first, the first page, you have a big massive banner that says how can we help you? And under that, there's four buttons. The second button is the have your say button. And initially you're shown three of the most recent, um, projects or procedures or policies that are on exhibition. And you're able to click on them and, and learn more about them and then see information about face-to-face public drop-in sessions. Uh, for example, the operational plan, which is on exhibition at the moment. Um, has information on the pop-up sessions, uh, that have occurred in Curry Curry and as councillor, um, Hawkins mentioned earlier, one at Paxton last week. And they can make some, uh, submissions on that site. Um, and the button just underneath these initial three that show up, that says a few more consultations, then navigates people to the Together Cessnock, um, page, which I didn't really know too much about myself, um, and never navigate to it independently. But it is quite easy to get to, um, via that have your say button on the homepage. And it actually lists all of council's ongoing, um, projects, uh, that have been on consultation or have had submissions given or a plan to be on some, um, consultation again. Uh, things like the renaming of the regional B M X facility, uh, something that councillor, um, Moore has been very passionate about. Um, another project like the Klein Street Bridge in Weston that councillor Sander is, um, always discussing with the community at very long ends. So, um, I think that perhaps twelve, eighteen months ago, this, this nom might have hit the mark in terms of, you know, the council website wasn't as engaging as it can be and accessible as it can be. But I think at the moment with the current setup and the work that council staff continue to put into improving, um, our engagement with the community digitally. I think that it's, um, it's already achieving the goals that councillor Jerd is, is aiming for with this nom.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, can I just ask, um, councillor Hill, can you find where you put your submissions in about Wallonby Road there? Not on there? Oh. Conversation's not open? Consultation's not open? Ah, ah, right, okay, okay, right. Um, it's interesting, interesting. I heard councillor Hill, young man who's come through a school of computers and works in I T. And he's been studying the page and he's worked it out. The average resident will go on council sites probably once in a lifetime maybe, when there's a, there's a D A or something next to him and they wanna make a comment. And I'm from an era where, uh, computers weren't around when I was at school and I struggle.
Go please, come to order. Councillor Olson has the floor. Councillor Olson.
I, I struggle with this page. Every time I get on there, I asked the, the, um, Mr Planning and Environment Director the other day about a D A. And he said, oh, all you need's a D A number. Great, if you know what a D A number is. Um, but if you don't have a D A number, it's useless. Um, I can't find anything on that D A tracker without a D A number. And I, I, I use the page as much as I can, but I struggle with it. A lot of people out there, uh, have the same opinion. This motion wasn't put here just because councillor Jerd is struggling with it. It's because residents have been raising these issues with us at our meet and greets. And they say, how do we put in submissions on anything? How do we find this? We go on there and we can't find this and we can't find that. It's not user friendly if you don't use it every day. Computers are great if you're using programs every day. If you don't use the program every day, then they need to be dumbed down for people like me. I don't know how to use this website. I, and if I don't know how to use it, I use it on a regular basis. Then other people are gonna struggle as well. The younger ones might be able to work it out, but the average citizen that doesn't use it much needs to be able to find it quickly. Otherwise, I'll just walk away. They won't put their objection or their support in and then council staff say there's been no objections on their support. So I, I support the motion. I think it's a great idea. We need to make it simple. It's all right for the I T specialist to sit in their office and say, we know what we're doing. But, but just start thinking about the people on the outside of the council chambers.
Thank you, councillor Olson. Just in answer to your question about where you can find the, the Wallonby Road stuff, so when you're on the front page of the website, you have the, have your say button. You also have the works button straight on the front page. It's a major works program. Clicks here and you can scroll straight down, Wallonby Road upgrades. It's not on, uh, submission, but there is information about the project on the website. So I was just, uh, answering your, your question. Thank you. Uh, councillor, uh, Moors.
Thank you. Matt, uh, I feel sorry for Ian. If he's struggling with the computer, I'm sure councillor Hill would be able to hook up with him and give him some lessons and, uh, just bring him along slowly and so he can find what he's looking for, you know? Thank you.
Councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, look, yeah, look, I've been on council since twenty sixteen and there's been a vast improvement to the council website and, um, you know, it's, it's there. It, it, the biggest words that you can see as soon as you go to the homepage are how we can help you. You click on a button that says have your say. It also says report an issue. Uh, it's got forms and development. It, this website cannot get any better than it is. Um, it's, it's a great website and it's amazing. It's amazing how many people are experts in social media but not on a website. It's amazing. It's amazing. Uh, perhaps they need to do some extra training in some other areas to make sure that they can fulfill their civic role. But look, I, I commend the staff, uh, for the work that they continually do to the website to upgrade it. Is there areas, uh, in the backend of the website that can be improved? Absolutely. But in regards to showing people where to have your say, if you can't go to the homepage and see where it actually says in the blue box with the white writing, have your say, I don't know how easier we can make it. And I'm certainly not going to support, uh, this motion to allow us to spend more money uh, on the website when what we're asking for is already there.
Yeah. Councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'm, I'm, I'm not overly tech savvy myself, so I'll, I'll apologize if this. Yeah, as, as the staff will, will be aware, well and truly aware. Um, look, I think this, in its, in its submission issues, it may be of concern to them. Is there any way we could put some software in our council website that when I go on the website, it could check maybe my browser history so that it could work out what I would be interested in and what would be of, of interest to me? Does it? Yeah, an algorithm that can tell what I look at and things that may interest me. Have we got that sort of technology?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a rhetorical question, councillor Hawkins. So, uh, councillor Painter.
Did three, Mr Mayor, just quickly, for those people in our community who aren't tech savvy, is there an option for them to come to the council and make a submission directly? Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you. Yes, councillor Painter, um, people can come into our customer service centre and I will be assisted to make a submission.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, closing debate, councillor Jerd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanna point out, um, you know how I said earlier I struggle with this council website and I might make it a bit clearer on why. Um, we've been dyslexic. Trying to read wa- white writing on a dark blue tab is very, very hard to see. The words go all over the screen. So just a heads up, council can't fix that. I've already spoke with the media team. They aren't able to fix this for, this issue for me and I don't expect them to fix it just for me. But I'm not the only person in this town that is dyslexic. So this is why I've brought it forward because there's a few people in this town that have just mentioned it to me that they struggle to use this website. And I just thought it would be nice to support this, to this town in looking into maybe making it a bit easier.
Councillor Jerd has the floor. Councillor Jerd is speaking.
Um, and also, uh, councillor Hill, seeing as you're so great with I T, would, would you be able to sometimes, I know with work it might not be able to, but we do do our coffee dates on a Friday morning and I know you're probably at work, but if we ever change the time, would you come and help some of the residents that come there and, because we've been trying to help them and it's very hard for me with the council website? Yeah, it's very hard to be able to help them when you can't use it because of your disability and, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, councillor Jerd has the floor.
Yeah. So this, this isn't just for me. This is, this is for the residents that are finding it difficult. There's a lot of people in this town that are over fifty that, well, hang on, how old do you need to be? That, that, no, please, please listen, listen. That didn't go to school. I think, I think I started high school when computers come in to play. I think I was about year seven or year eight, I think, because I don't remember. Is that's where I was going with it? Sorry if I age, age shamed anyone. I didn't mean to. But when you don't go through school with computers, it is quite difficult to use. So that is why. There's been a fair few that are older that didn't go through school with computers that do struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further debate, we'll put the item, those in favour. Uh, so, so, uh, councillors Painter, Watten, Olson and Jerd. Those against. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Burke, Grine, Hill, Hawkins and Saval will declare it lost. Uh, moving on to report B N twelve twenty twenty three. Uh, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Painter. Uh, uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mr Saval. Um, my motion here is, is one for advocacy. I'll, I'll just give a quick run-through of the motion. That is that council write to the New South Wales Minister for Regional Transport and Roads, the Honourable Jenny Atchison, M P, uh, and the Member for Cessnock, Clayton Bar, M P, requesting an update on transport for New South Wales plans for the improvement of the state road corridor between Curry Curry and Maitland with reference to the solutions identified in council's Head and Greata Cliff Lee Corridor Structure Plan. This, um, this notice of motion comes on the back of the landmark opening of traffic lights, uh, in Head and Greata, uh, only about a block or so from where I live and, and I've been experiencing the impact of the the very slow works on Main Road in Head and Greata for the past four years. Um, however, last year council did, um, community consultation in regards to the Head and Greata Cliff Lee Corridor Structure Plan. Um, and a number of submissions were taken on board from the community about further improvements that we need along the main road between the Hunter Expressway and Testers Hollow to account for the massive increase in traffic that the Hunter Expressway has brought since it opened. Um, and speaking and sort of, and being on-site for the opening of the traffic lights there and, and seeing that the impact that it's had to alleviate the stress on the main road and the side roads coming into the main road. It just shows that it, they do have a massive impact to help, but there's a lot more still to be done. The, a number of items that were identified in the Corridor Structure Plan include an additional set of traffic lights at the intersection of Young Street and Main Road at the Head and Greata Hotel and, um, a roundabout solution near the Red Rooster and the, um, petrol station near the Hes, uh, to, Hex to allow motorists to come off the expressway and refuel to be able to re-enter the expressway without doing dangerous U-turns up residential side streets in Head and Greata. Um, and while it's great that we finally got the ball over the line for the current set of traffic lights, I think it's important to continue the advocacy for the, uh, additional improvements. Council is already making its movements to work on the design works to, um, upgrade and repair side roads that were negatively impacted while the main roadworks were undergoing. Um, and this next step in us advocating to the state government should push forward the additional steps required to improve the safety um, and traffic flow along the main road.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mayor, I, look, I, this is common sense, we should be having that road improved all the way from, from Curry right through to Maitland and, uh, I just, all I want to say is I hope we have better luck than what we did with the car park there, because we, we had Joffre's given and Dan replicantly and Clayton Bar and Mel's once and all telling us they're going to build a car park there for everyone, many, many years, over the many years. And we still haven't got the car park, so let's hope we get something done quicker, at least get a report back quicker uh, from these people, just tell us what's going on with the, what's their plan for the Cliff Lee corridors.
Councillor Painter.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, um, I agree with the, with the, the car park that's always promising, has never arrived. My greatest concern though is, um, having sort of the, um, corner, Young Street with a pub is whether, um, towards where you get dropped off of an afternoon, the traffic through there is horrendously busy. And to see, you know, ten, twelve and fourteen-year-olds crossing the road, who aren't always, um, attention savvy, you know, they could be, um, distracted by friends and, um, a, a crossing or, um, pedestrian crossing there would be super helpful. Or maybe we could approach the bus company to have them drop them off on the side of the, um, pub side because that's where the parents wait for them at the, in the, um, car park there. My concern is we've raised this, um, self, councillor Hill and councillor Grines, with, um, Clayton Bar and Mayor Olson, and I know it's a state issue. But I'm just, I was on public record that, um, we recognise as a safety issue there with, with no crossing. And, um, my concern is for those, those school kids getting dropped off on that corner. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, cannot more wholeheartedly and more enthusiastically support this notice of motion because I can't believe there's not more accidents than what there are right now along that area. I, I drive there pretty much nearly every day going into Weston and the whole U-turn situation past Red Rooster is crazy. It's, it's crazy, the kids going across, the kids like to ride dirt bikes behind the service station over there. There's all kinds of like things going on, so, uh, it is nice to see bits of infrastructure improve and I'm glad we celebrated the lights, that, was there an opening ceremony or wasn't invited? Okay, no, so we didn't go that far. It's nice to see though, like even through Weston, the footpaths be created, you know, which is, is good. Um, and it'd just be nice to see a lot, all the way across, like, safety issues resolved there. So yeah, fully support this, hopefully, um, we can get something happening, some strong advocacy. Yep.
Cue, no further debates. Put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Uh, councillor reports. No councillor reports, I will now have someone move that we head into the, uh, confidential session. Move councillor Burke, seconded councillor Moors, uh, all those in favour, unanimous. Uh, lastly, to clear the gallery.